Call our study session to order. Do I need to do the roll call now? No, yes, roll call? Everyone's here. Okay, no, go ahead.
Councilmember Mariko Seok.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Leonardis.
Here.
Councilmember Rob Rennie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Barbara Spector.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Marcia Jensen.
Here.
We are gathered today for a study session just on budget matters. I will, for those of you in the audience who want to make any comment, if you'd like, I think I'll wait till the end of the presentation if you have questions or comments and then call you up then. But for right now, I'm going to turn it over first to Mr. White.
Just briefly, we had discussed on staff having a presentation that would give an overview of the budget document in terms of number of the different policies and some of the overview of trends that are in this particular budget document. And in that regard, the two speakers in front of you, Steve and Jennifer, have spent considerable time putting together this presentation and they have reviewed it with the senior staff and a number of us have had a chance to provide comments on it. I would ask that if you can, there are about four or five points in the presentation where we said Q and A, if we can hold questions and then do them as they pause, that would be a preferred approach just because they can get through kind of a story about a section of what they're presenting. There may be questions too that come up that of a departmental nature that are detailed. If that's the case, you may want to direct us to bring back answers on those on May 19th. Otherwise, if they are questions that Steve and Jennifer can handle, they'll do that or if it's a quick question for a department head, they could do that too. But I'm trying to suggest these things because the presentation is lengthy, that we want to have plenty of time for council questions. And if it's possible, when there is a major detail kind of question requiring some staff work, then I would urge that we bring that back at a later date to you.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, Steve.
Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Les, and good evening, members of the council. We're dimming the lights because we wanted the council to be able to see our presentation a little more clearly because we do have some comparison slides later in the show and we're trying not to, I promise not to, give you death by par point if I can help it. So I'm just very, on behalf of Jennifer Calway, our Finance and Budget Manager, myself, Steve Conway, the Director of Finance, we're just very happy to have some time to go over the presentation that we're calling Money Matters and More: The Town's Budget Past, Present, and Perspective. We've got elements of past budgets in this presentation, elements of the current budget, and we're going to talk a little bit about the future financial plan for the town. And this is, we chose the title Money Matters and More because money truly does matter. It's really important that we as public servants and also as town council recognize that if we are not good stewards with the public's resources, we cannot provide excellent services and they go hand in hand. You can't provide great services without some financial resources to do that. And so when we look at the budget in terms of, what does it mean in terms of a town, our town budget, we look at the budget mainly as a financial plan and a guide for us as service delivery staff. Hopefully, the budget reflects the council's priorities and strategic goals. These are developed by council as part of the council's strategic goal and priority sessions that occur throughout the year. And once we've got ourselves clear about what our goals are, then we attach funding levels and resources to those goals so that we, and the net result of that, when all is said and done, is you have a budget. Our current budget, and I'm going to talk a lot about or emphasize our general fund budget, our general fund budget this fiscal year is $34.5 million. That's our operating budget. That's the budget, that is the checkbook that we write most of our, pay most of our bills out of and that's, that fund is used primarily for all of the town services that we deliver to the public. And you can see we provide public safety services, Parks and Public Works, community development, library, our admin services, which is the town manager's office, the finance department, HR, the treasurer, and of course, the clerk's office. So those are our primary services we deliver to the community. Our chief funding source in our general fund checkbook, the money that comes into our general fund, is primarily composed of two major sources, sales tax and property tax. They account for approximately half of our $34 million budget. And an interesting thing that's happened over the past couple of years, actually probably the past two years, is that historically, sales tax has always been our number one source of revenue in our general fund checkbook. We are seeing now that sales tax is leveling out and property tax is still reflecting, I think, the attractiveness of our, and the vibrancy of our community. Property tax is continuing to grow and we expect in our five-year plan that property tax actually will be our leading revenue source, which is a change for the town. Historically, it's always been sales tax. Followed real closely after those two is another chunk of money that's about $3 to $4 million a year, which is our licenses and permits and our charges for services. Those largely come from our development services, our community development department. They fluctuate with the economy, but when we have a lot of development activity, we receive a fair amount of revenue that comes in. Followed that are a number of others I would call smaller revenues. I'd like to talk real briefly about business licenses and transient occupancy tax. The two of those, they average about $1.5 million a year. Both of those have picked up in recent years with the economic recovery that we've experienced and that's been good news. Both of those, as I mentioned, about $1.5 million a year. Interest income used to be a primary source. Our money that we invest hasn't really changed. We still have a fairly good treasury balance that we invest, but the interest rates that we're able to obtain have fallen below 1%. So unfortunately, that revenue source for the time being has been fairly minimal. We also, within the general fund, have a $1.9 million debt service program that we, that's basically the payments we make on our long-term debt. This is funded entirely by the Closed Redevelopment Agency. We have two bond issues outstanding, our 2002 and 2010 COPs. One was used for the library, our beautiful new library that we opened in 2012, and the other one was for the downtown improvements that were made in 2002. There's annual debt service that is being paid and that's the tune of $2 million a year and those will extend out through the 2020s and we will have that as a program and a payment. Another big category that we have expenditures is our capital budget. And that budget is approximately for this year, $15.4 million. There's a $7 million carryover of money that we programmed in prior years where we just haven't got the project work done yet. So the total of that is $15.4 million and that primarily is funded with our general fund reserves. I'll be touching on that in a little bit. Our general fund reserves accumulate through our year-end savings when we have revenues. Hopefully, we're in the black, our revenues exceed our expenditures and per our council policy, once we've established all our other reserve levels at their correct amount, the balance of that would flow into our reserve for capital improvements and that's a huge funding source for our capital program. And we have other funding sources like gas tax and those other smaller ones, grants and that sort of thing, but they are not near to the level of our money that we get off our general fund. So when we look at what a fund is, and so what is a fund? Historically, in governmental accounting, each of these funds, general fund, special revenue fund, capital projects, the internal, the debt and the trust and agency funds, all of those funds were kept in separate checking accounts. There used to be a separate bank account for each of these types of funds. As times have progressed, we pretty much do not have gone away from that. We have two or three primary checking accounts now for the town, but we can, through our accounting technology, we can track these funds as if they were separate checkbooks. Each of these has a special purpose. The special revenue fund is for monies that is only, can only be spent, gas taxes as an example, can only be spent for streets and roads, can't be used for anything else. Debt service fund I mentioned is just for the payments of our long-term debt. Capital projects is our infrastructure. Internal service funds are funds we create to park money aside, recharge the general fund, and then we use those funds to pay for things like, one of the internal service funds we have is our equipment replacement fund, I'll be talking about that. But that is a fund that we set aside money to buy our replacement fleet equipment when the time comes for a new police car. We have money set aside. When that car has reached the end of its useful life, we'll have money set aside to buy a new car as needed. And then the trust and agency funds are money we hold on behalf of others. It's a pass-through, we hold it, we legally, in some cases, we can use it for town purposes. We have some library trust funds where people have bequeathed money to us and they're specifically to be used for certain library purposes and we hold it until we have money, or identified the appropriate use of those funds. The general fund reserves that I mentioned, currently, our balance, we project will be $19.5 million. I want to point out that $10 million of that, approximately 10, is the threshold or the floor that we need to keep aside by council reserve policy to address any economic or disaster uncertainties that may arise. We have a 20, that's the 25% of our operating budget. By council policy, we keep that. So when you look at that $19.5 million, you can see that approximately half of that is set aside. So we really have $10 million of the big, the bulk of that $10 million, a large percentage of that is our general fund reserve for capital dollars. You can notice that our high watermark in our general fund was 2012, '13 of $26 million and we have, we have dropped a few million, about $7 million in the past two years. And that may invite a question and I can answer it. We spent $4.5 million in '13, '14 fiscal year to pay off our CalPERS side fund liability. That's giving us anywhere from $700,000 to $900,000 savings for five years. And I think approximately $197,000 of real net savings, net present value savings over the next five years. And then we used another significant amount to set aside in our capital program and that started this fiscal year and that's money we've set aside. One of the big projects of that set aside is the Almond Grove project. So that leaves us with a forecasted balance of $19.5 million. Looking at our general fund revenues in our checkbook, you can see, I mentioned before that sales and property tax are our two biggest ones. And you can see that the red bar that represents property tax is the one that is showing some robust growth, whereas you can see that sales tax has been more static. We did have a high watermark in sales tax there of almost $10 million and that was before Netflix changed its business model. Once the business model changed, we had a decline in our revenues and we have stayed fairly stable in sales tax. It's not growing as much as we had hoped. Looking at the next two revenues, these tell an interesting story. These are our license and permits and our charges for services. These are monies we take in from the community development department and you can see during the, in the '08, '09, as the recession hit, those revenues were a smaller piece of the stacked bars, but you can see now in the past three fiscal years, a much more significant portion. That represents money that comes in, a lot of that is from the development activity. So there's pass-through revenues that come in from developers and into the general fund checkbook and go back out again for services. I mentioned that the interest revenue, though the amount of money we invest hasn't changed much, the interest rates we've been able to, and the yield we've been able to achieve has really declined in the past few years because as money has matured in our portfolio and we reinvest it, we just don't have the yield opportunities out there to gain much yield. It's below 1%. The next revenue I'm looking at is our franchise fees followed by our TOT. I mentioned those are following the economy. Then we have this white section that is our other revenue. That's revenue that we don't have necessarily a category for and the big, we wanted to explain some of the bigger ones. In '08, '09, that was a big general fund infusion into the checkbook. That was for the Vessona land sale. We turned around and used a bulk of that money to, for the University Park sports complex. And then in '12, '13, the redevelopment agency closed out, the state closed redevelopment agencies. So the residual funding that came back to the town was approximately $600,000 as a result of that. And then we had realignment money in '13, '14 and that was for public safety services. That money came to the town, but we were just a pass-through, we held it and then it was, we cut checks out to Santa Clara County Law Enforcement Agencies out of that. So that explains that revenue. When we look at our general fund checkbook expenditures by category, this is probably not a surprise to council, 70% of our costs are in the form of salary and benefits. You can see that also in our salary and benefit numbers, they did increase in 2013, '14 and that was when we made the side fund payoff. That's why you'd see a spike there. Had we not made that side fund payoff, they would have risen slightly because we had raise in there. The red bar is the materials and supplies and contractual services. They don't change much. Those are just the necessary contracts and things we buy for all the services that we provide, things that are like material, just supplies, the stuff you have to do to do your business. That doesn't change much. We have fixed assets. We had a large purchase in 2009, '10 for property near downtown. That explains that, that would normally be a small piece. Grants and awards are, at this point, still a fairly small portion of our expenditures. Debt service I mentioned is after we built the library now, that should be a pretty constant amount of $2 million a year out of the general fund checkbook. And then the internal service funds charges, these internal service fund checkbooks charge our general fund and that's a pretty static amount. We can predict that fairly accurately and those charges and those expenditures don't change all that much. Looking at the department, as I mentioned, they reflect our priorities and our goals and a big chunk of our general fund checkbook is actually spent for public safety, about $14 million for police, followed by non-departmental. Non-departmental is a program that doesn't have a specific home, but it has some significant expenditures. And where they are and shown is how they run out of the general fund checkbook is we have, this is where we write non-departmental checks out to our capital program. So in '07, '08, we were ramping up for library, that was $6.1 million. In this recent year, we had $7.2 million that was paid out of the capital, out of the general fund, of the capital projects fund for our new, our '14, '15 capital program. As I mentioned, a big part of that, part of that was Almond Grove. And then in '13, '14, we had a $4.5 million side fund payoff out of non-departmental. These next, these next two, we have community development. You can see, you can see that the community development program, though it appears that we have an added staff in community development, but the expenditures have gone up. The reason is because as the economy's improved, the pass-through revenues, I mentioned on the revenue side, come into the checkbook, then we cut checks out for other services that are needed for the planning and development area. And oftentimes, that may go to an architectural consultant or that sort of thing. Money comes in from the developer, goes back out again. And that's why during the years of increased economic recovery, we see that that purple sector has grown in the past couple of years when it was down, when the recession was more affecting us. Admin services I mentioned should be a fairly static amount. That's the admin that I mentioned was manager's office, finance, HR, clerk, not the treasury. And then the library has been around a $2 million a year budget historically. We've been keeping and you'll see later when Jen, when we look at our library budget, we're very competitive against other service deliveries from other localities in Santa Clara County. And then we have, just going back just a small, these are our smaller offices. We have a very competitive and low cost. I like to point out our town attorney's office rates well along with our town council and treasurer. They're all a very small piece of the pie and very cost competitive when we're looking at our comparison cities. And Jen will be getting into that. I wanted to talk about these internal service funds, these checkbooks, a little bit. And this is our good news portion of the presentation, at least for my part of the presentation. We have some significant balances in our equipment replacement fund. We have about $3.5 million in that checkbook and we recommend that we could probably lower that level to $2 million. Right now, we have enough to replace 30% of our fleet at any given time and we don't think that that would probably ever happen, that we'd need to replace 30% of our present fleet. If we drop to 11 to 2, to a level of 2 million, we could replace 20% of our fleet, which still would be a very healthy balance. A lot of cities nationwide are at about a 15% level, so we're double the national average in terms of money set aside for that particular function. And then another good news story is we have a management information systems fund, internal service fund. This is money that's set aside for technology improvements townwide in all the various programs, all the departments. We have a $2.5 million balance. We recommend leaving that balance. We have a number of technology projects. I think the number is in the high 20s.
Eighteen current projects and about 20 systems that you are working on and we're up in the process of looking at that and updating a master plan that we'll bring back to the council in a couple of months, which will show priorities in terms of the use of those funds. It's interesting to, when you see those funds together, there was a day when the management information systems fund would have virtually no money in it, but the expense of that has dramatically gone up while some of the equipment replacement funds have remained a bit more static.
Thank you, Les. That's correct. I agree with you on that. And so getting back there, we think we would recommend that that fund remain at its level. We have some internal service funds that have, are not quite so healthy and I wanted to touch a little bit on those. And the first one I'm going to talk about is our internal service fund for general liability. That's our ABAG self-insurance fund. That fund had a balance in 2011 of $2 million. It is now down to $800,000, we project by the end of this fiscal year. And we would recommend a balance kept at $2 million. This fund addresses our portion of our liability that when we have a claim filed, a general liability, a claim filed against the town that's in the general liability area or property damage claim, we're self-insured for the first $50,000 on a general liability claim. Anything above that, we are part of a pool and we have excess coverage that would cover us, but we are covered, we're on the, it's our dime for the first $50,000 for each claim or occurrence that occurs. And we've had some adverse claims against the town in past fiscal years recently. That's been fairly unusual, which has made the claims that we've paid out have dropped our balance. Similarly, in the workers' comp, we had a balance of almost $2.8 million a few years back. We are now down to $1.1 million and we recommend a $2 million level also for that fund. And we have addressed these funds in our budget development for '15, '16. We need to adjust our rates that we charge the general fund so that we can achieve a more healthy balance in these funds. But we are tracking and we were aware of this trend and we've been trying to adjust our rates to address it and we have been proactive in that regard. Another fund that isn't necessarily challenged, this was more of a conscious decision, but our facilities fund, that's the fund we use to set aside for facilities improvements. The civic center that we are sitting in and enjoying this presentation tonight is maintained through the facilities fund. And you can see that that balance has dropped from $1,300,000 down to $270,000, project for this year. And the reason for that is we made, council approved and made a conscious decision to use some of those fund balances to make the improvements at the old library site of the civic center and also to make way for improvements for the new museum of Los Gatos and the Friends Library. We used a chunk of that. We will recommend that we build that balance back up to about $900,000. We selected $900,000 as an appropriate level because since I've been Director of Finance of the town, we've had two major HVAC failures in civic center buildings. Any of those can run anywhere from $250,000 to $450,000, $500,000 in repairs. And then we've had a number of deck failures and roof failures. So we wanted to have adequate funds to address that. We had a place to go to if we have a bad winter storm or we have an HVAC failure, we'll have money set aside. So our goal is to build that back up over time to about approximately $900,000 level. But one good piece of news regarding this other internal service fund that we have is our vehicle maintenance fund. That fund does, has a balance of $740,000 and we think that that's another opportunity for reallocation. We think that balances could be more like $100,000. This, excuse me, this balance is kept for ongoing annual routine maintenance of our fleet. That means oil changes, routine repairs. The money coming into that checkbook theoretically should go out that same year to provide those services. So if we're building up balances in there, that means the money we brought in was in excess of what we needed, what, actually, it tells a good story. Our maintenance costs were lower than we thought, but we have balances available there and those could be reallocated or used for other services. So this was just a review that we thought was really interesting for council. And I'm at a point where I can stop and take some questions if council has any questions at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi, Steve.
Hi.
On page 10, well, it's on page 10 on the iPad. It's the one that having to do with ABAG self-insurance and workers' comp.
Yes.
The ones where the funds drop down.
Yes.
You talked about the financial changes that you are anticipating. Does the town anticipate any behavioral changes to, so that we don't have that significant expenditure?
I think I will answer that by allowing one of the department, as I know Roomy's here, our HR director in terms of workers' comp, I can tell you that since I've been Director of Finance, these past few years have been unusual. We've had a number of employees that have been out for almost a year period. That has not been the norm. I think that accounts for, I think part of it is, you know, it's a cyclical nature of it, so there's some of that. Then regarding the, and I know for a fact on the general liability and our town attorney can probably talk about that program, that has also been, in my 14-year tenure, just these past few years have been unusual in terms of claims against the town. If you looked at our financial statements over a 15-year period, you wouldn't see that. But I think, I think that staff is well aware of the fact that there are measures we can take to be more proactive to, and I'll let any of the, at this point, any of the town attorney or whoever would like to talk about that.
Mr. Schulte.
From a liability practice, we are making changes in that to try to bring down those payments to ABAG. And as Steve mentioned, workman's comp, we had some unprecedented claims, very major injuries to employees that I just, I had not seen elsewhere either and they were numerous. So once those go away and we get back to that trend, but we are trying to implement other strategies that would bring those, both those payments down and especially in the liability. And I've brought some of those to your attention and will be bringing more back in June when I do my comprehensive pending litigation as the strategies that I undertake to bring that payment down.
Thank you. Councilman Leonardis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Jensen. So, Mr. Conway, when we have those liabilities or those injured employees, do we bill it to those departments, say we have a guy at Public Works that gets hurt? Does that become part of the Public Works budget or does it just come out of that pool of money and we don't count it as part of the Public Works labor cost or salary cost or whatever, operating cost?
Initially, as a person goes on a worker's comp disability, the charges are made to the program where they are working. However, because we have this fund, what we do is we basically move those expenses once, when we've achieved a point where we know what the amount of payments out were made on behalf of that employee. Let's say it's a Parks and Public Works employee. That department is reimbursed back from our workers' comp fund because it's appropriate that those charges, that's, that department has been making those payments, those work based on payroll over a period of time, like, it's like that department bought an insurance policy. So if you have an employee that becomes injured, the workers' comp fund then reimburses the Parks and Public Works account for the extent of those payments. So it's, it is, that does occur. Is that, am I clear about that?
Yes. So for those watching at home type of thing, in other words, they kind of pay as they go as an insurance policy.
Exactly.
And then someday, when they need it, they'll take it and it'll get reimbursed from the fund that we put it into when we collected it from them.
And that's how the fund balance goes down because we're paying back, we're, the internal service fund is functioning as the insurance company.
All right. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Councilman Rennie, I thought you had your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Following along the same question, my experience has been in the corporate world, when you see accident rates go up, they usually, we implement training programs to, you know, try to prevent those, you know, since I know we've kind of squeezed staffing in the past years, possibly this was, you know, people moving too fast, too much to do, not enough people. Do we have any, this is probably for the department heads, any plans to do training in this area to be preventive? Thank you.
I think I will call on my department head.
Yeah, that might be one of those questions that it would be best to bring back in the budget to show you what we are expending on training, the areas that we're doing training in. And the reason I say that is because some of the departments, like Public Works, will be doing some safety and training within the department. So we'd need to have that information as well as then getting information from Roomy on overall training efforts. So there's a combination of things that go on. But unfortunately, unfortunately, when budgets get cut, training gets cut as one of the first things and that's usually a short-sighted thing to do. first things, and that's usually a short-sighted thing to do in an organization. So we need to look at some of the training areas, and we have been selectively trying to do some training in various areas just recently even.
Thank you. That's certainly adequate to bring that back at the next meeting.
But, Mr. White, it's fair to say that, that there is training that's being contemplated and that we'll, we're going to see what that is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilwoman Seaw.
Yes, thank you. So Steve, for the areas I'm looking at, your Internal Service Funds for A-BAG, workers' comp and facilities maintenance, your balances are below what you say you would like to be at?
Yes.
So how do you bring those balances back up? Is that something that you bring back to us?
Yes, the, as an example, the workers' comp balance that is down to 1.1, and as we try to build it back up over a number of years, we have adjusted our workers' comp insurance rates. We're the insurance, we're the workers' comp insurance company. We have adjusted our rates. We charge the user departments that provide all our services. It's based on payroll, so we've actually have adjusted our rates. And interestingly enough, the rate we adjusted our rates for 15, 16, the budget we'll be bringing you forward in two weeks, the rate that we're charging ourselves is the rate that a city, one of our neighbors paid an actuary to determine what was a rate they really should use for, for workers' comp. And we're within like 1/100th of percent of that rate, and we saved our money because we used our personal experience instead of hiring an actuary. So we think the rate is, really makes a lot of sense. And so, yeah, we have increased the rate for next year.
Before I call on other people, I have a question, the big picture question. So it seems to me you could take, you said, well, our equipment replacement is too high and our vehicle maintenance is too high.
Yes.
And these other ones are too low. Can you shift money or is there some rules against co-mingling?
No, we could, we definitely can, and we've done it before. And during budget crises, we've actually used the Equipment Replacement Fund as an example to give us some money back to the general fund in the form of a rebate, and we definitely have the flexibility to recommend that. And we will, we will be looking at that, and probably not for this budget coming up in the next two weeks, but in the next year, when we work, talk with council, we will be looking at some recommendations for possibly reallocating some of those excess funds for other purposes that we think are more appropriate. There's no sense keeping excess balances in the Internal Service Funds if they're not warranted.
Okay, quick follow-up as to why that's not appropriate to bring back in two weeks versus next fiscal year?
Only, only because, as I would like to thank our new town, interim town manager, Les White, he was asking, do we have any excess balances? And we, and I'll tip my hat to him, and we identified that. I think we actually do, and it was a great thought. Les, thank you. And so we just haven't had time to react. We've already been so far down our budget planning, but we may look, come forward with something at mid-year or the first quarter budget with some recommendations to council about, about that. So it's just more timing than anything.
Other questions on this portion of the presentation? Councilman Rennie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to ask about the Development Department. I understand, I've heard many times in the past, the goal is to pay for the department from the fees by development. But as you mentioned, you're going to have economic ups and downs, and you can't hire and fire as fast as, you know, you wouldn't want to as fast as you go up and down. So what is the philosophy for where do you, where do you staff the department? You staff at the bottom and then just contract out? You mentioned that the outgoing also increased as the economic activity or the development increases. So somewhere in there, you were probably adding staff, or where do you set the staff level on this?
Now, Councilman Rennie, if I could ask just, we actually have, we're actually going to talk about that. Jen's part of her presentation is going to talk about staffing, and it's going to specifically address the community development department. And so can, can I just hold off on that? And we will cover that. It's coming up.
Okay. Councilman Leonardis.
One last question, going back to the workman's comp. Do we pay that regardless of how the injury to the employee was obtained? For instance, say somebody was skiing on the weekend and they hurt themselves and they were unable to perform their job? Or is it on-the-job injuries only?
I believe that workers' comp would be strictly for on-the-job injuries, and we actually have a claims administrator that reviews all filed claims, professional claims administrator, innovative claim services, I believe is our vendor. And they do a very thorough background and review before we allow any claim to be paid out of our workers' comp fund.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else? All right, okay, oh, one more.
So what property was bought in 2009, '10?
That was the Diddle, Diddles Lane property.
But that should have been bought with RDA money.
Yes.
So we, you had to go out, but you must have had to come in somewhere else then.
Yeah. It, we just had it, we were showing it as categories of expenditures, so we just want, it was a fixed asset, so that's why it, that's why it came up on our charts.
Okay. One last question if I could. So we're carrying, we're doing debt service in the general fund. What was that debt for and what's a reasonable amount of debt to carry or service?
We actually have, the town actually technically has no legal debt at this moment because the debt that we are paying, the $2 million, it's being paid out of the general fund checkbook, but we're getting a $2 million annual payment from the Closed Redevelopment Agency to make us whole 100%. So technically, I believe bondholders would, would probably press us on that, but technically the town has no legal debt at this point in terms of bonds. They are actually the legal responsibility of the redevelopment agency, the Closed Redevelopment, which is now the successor agency.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. I think we're ready to go to the next section.
Okay. Well, thank you. So one of the questions we received from the council was, there was a lot of interest about what is the status of our unfunded pension liability? And we're happy to report, not necessarily happy, but we're, we're going to disclose our balances, and we took a look, and we wanted to do that in relation to some of our comparison cities. You can see that our total unfunded pension liability right now is $41.2 million. That puts us in the middle of our comparison agencies. We used Gilroy, Campbell, Los Gatos, Morgan Hill and Los Altos as our comparison cities. We intentionally didn't include Saratoga because we wanted to compare apples to apples. And Saratoga has no public safety employees, no, no, no public safety pensioners. So there, they only had miscellaneous category employees, and it would not be an apples-to-apples comparison to include them, so we did not. We have a $41.2 million unfunded pension liability. What that means is the, the net present value of the promises and pension promises that are made, you compare that level against the actuary, the present value of our assets that are invested at CalPERS, and the difference right now, and this fluctuates at any given time because investments earn returns and that sort of thing. But at the moment, at the time this was measured, it was $41.2 million. And so we wanted to also talk a little bit about the fact that that's not our only unfunded liability. We, we also have, I want to mention too, that we looked at another way to look at this. So we had a $41.2 million unfunded liability amount, but when we talked to the actuaries at PERS, when we were getting this number from the actuaries at PERS, they said, you know, you really ought to take a look at your funded pension ratio. That means the value of money that you've put, the town has put into the pension plan in Sacramento that's being invested against the total liability or promise that was made for pensioners. And right now, the town is at 72.2%. That means we are, we have three out of every four dollars needed parked away in the, in the Pension Trust Fund in Sacramento. Interestingly enough, a national survey was done, and this just shows the value between public safety, safety plans and our miscellaneous plans. You can see that they're both about 72%. And we just had a national survey that was done, and we received that information about a week and a half ago, coincidentally. And it was a survey of nationwide of U.S. cities, counties and states. And the average funded pension ratio across the nation is 72%. So Los Gatos is right, right in, right at, right that, right at that average, which is just more coincidental than anything, but it does give us some comfort that we are, in terms of our funded ratio, we are with many of our state, county and local government brethren across the nation. And so we have a pension liability that's $41.2 million. We have another unfunded liability that arises from our OPEB, which is our post-employee benefits, which is our post-retirement healthcare for our, for our retirees. That amount is 13.5. So we have a $54.8 million total unfunded liability at this, at this present time that the town is carrying. And I wanted to talk a little bit about that because there's been a lot of press about these, these unfunded liabilities. What does that mean? And I thought it would be good for us to look at what we're talking about when we talk about unfunded liabilities. So I'm going to use an example of a couple that moves to our beautiful town, and they decide to invest in our town and they buy their first home, and it's a million four. I'll call it a fixer-upper. It doesn't look like that in my slide, but it's a million four fixer-upper. They have a nice down payment of $280,000, and they, they take back a loan of $1,020. And it's, I'm using kind of simple terms, it's a 30-year fixed mortgage. They have an interest rate of 3.78%, and let's just say it's three years down the road, and they have 27 years remaining on their fixed mortgage to make payments. And we calculated that at that three-year period, counting the principal and interest payments, they would be making over the 10, the remaining 27 years, they would have a $2 million, and assuming that they were not living with a large excess balance in their checking account, their personal account, they would have a $2 million unfunded liability that they're dealing with. And why this is an appropriate example is the GFOA and, and, and some of the major accounting firms have talked about this because there's been a lot of press about unfunded liabilities. Where you would get concerned, now, we know this couple, hopefully they have a good job and they can afford the payments on this $2 million unfunded liability, they would be concerned if they couldn't make their monthly payments. But I don't think most typical homeowners really spend a lot of time worrying about the fact that they have an unfunded liability of $2 million. They know they have monthly payments, just, and why they don't worry is that balance will be paid down over 27 years through the process of amortization. The rates and the amount, the monthly payment that they are making, that, that amount has, that $2 million unfunded liability is incorporated into their monthly payments, and over a 27-year period, that unfunded liability will go to zero. This is the same way our pension liabilities work. The pension liability that the town has, which I just mentioned, the 41.2 and also the, the OPEB liability, our actuaries build in a rate that considers that unfunded liability, and the rate that the employer we pay on our payroll amortizes that, that unfunded balance down over a 25 period, 25-year period, much like a home mortgage. It's a similar process. And I think that would just help us give some perspective on, on what we, what we mean and why I don't lose sleep myself as a Director of Finance over unfunded liabilities. There was, when I first hired at the town, we were actually in a surplus. Our plan had done so well in Sacramento, the investment earnings had done so well that we actually had assets exceeding our pension promises. So it's a very cyclical thing, but our actuaries, it's a moving target, and we, we make annual required, actuarially required contributions, which is our monthly, in terms of when you look at how a home would make their monthly mortgage payment. And a town, we have an annual, actuarially required contribution on an annual basis that we make that's determined, that takes into account our unfunded liability, and we have always paid that, and our five-year plan incorporates that. And so we know that over an amortization period of 25 years, we should be able to accommodate that within the budget. So when we plan for the future, I was mentioning our home budget of these wonderful people that bought their new home, they'll have income and expense, they'll have a monthly budget that they may prepare, they hopefully have some money left over at the end of the month that they set aside for a rainy day or college tuition for their children, home improvements, their future retirement. Similar, a similar situation for the town. Our general fund budget, our general fund checkbook hopefully is in the black at the end of the fiscal year, and we will have money set aside from that to, number one priority is that we have to establish the 25% of our operating budget level for our reserves, which is about $10 million. After that, then we have money available for our capital program that will go in our general fund reserve for capital. We have money, as I mentioned, that will be set aside for the economic or disaster-type activities. That's the minimum 10 million that we talked about. And then we'll have hopefully some money for some identified one-time expenditures that may not be capital, but that would come forward through the budget process available. And I believe our town manager wanted to talk a little bit about our ongoing...
Well, I just want to mention above the line too. I know that the, the town has been particularly interested in ensuring that you have one-time expenditures, but above that, the top of that arrow is important too, as you know, which is the ability to ensure that you have some funding there that can deal with restoring services or creating any new services you want, or dealing with some obligations that you may have for increasing operating expenditures such as the wildly vacillating fuel costs. And then obviously, you, you do encounter some needs periodically for dealing with personal services and issues like salary. So it's a constant balancing act between the ongoing expenditures up above and the one-time expenditures down below, and that takes occasionally, you know, really fine-tuning your revenue estimates and your expenditure estimates to try to create breathing room above the line as well as below the line.
Thank you, Les. So I'm at the point now where I can take, be happy to take questions from council regarding that section that I just covered.
Okay, I'm going to start to my right this time. Councilman Leonardis.
Thank you, Mayor Jensen. So, Mr. Conway, on the pension liabilities, how does that compare with the different cities with populations? For instance, Gilroy, I think, has much larger population. What was up there, Mountain View, Morgan Hill, oh, Morgan Hill, Campbell have larger populations, therefore more employees, right? Does it matter that we're kind of in the range with their liabilities, but they have a greater number of employees? Does that mean our...
Yeah, that is one of the, we recognize that Gilroy, as an example, has their own fire department, so they have more public safety employees, and you can see that their purple, their purple section is much higher in terms of their unfunded liability than ours. So it's a, it's a very valid point that it's really hard for us to find an exact match. You can't use, one of the interesting things is you could look at a city of exact population, and I will choose, I think I'll go to, I think Beverly Hills is very close to our population. They have double our police force in terms of personnel because of their daytime activity. So it was very difficult for us to find a true apple-to-apple comparison. We did the best we could to try to normalize it. But we, I think the more valid, and that's why actually the question that you raised was one of the questions I had of our actuary in Sacramento. He said, really, I wouldn't look so much at this unfunded liability. This is less important. What's more important is this, the ratio, because that's truly apples-to-apples. So Gilroy is slightly behind us in terms of money they've set aside for to address their liability. We actually are leading Gilroy a little bit, but this actually slides tells us that we are lagging some of our comparison communities. They have more money, slightly more money than we do in Sacramento in the trust to address their liability. And that's actually a more fair comparison. That's why we presented both of them.
Follow-up?
Follow-up. So you brought up the example of the mortgage payments over time, and eventually a mortgage would get paid off over 27 years, but an unfunded pension liability, 27 years from now, you'll still accumulate unfunded pension liability over time or...
Not necessarily. I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, but not necessarily. That's one of the curious things about a pension liability is if we have amazing returns on our investment portfolio, in a perfect world, we could get to a zero or even a surplus situation again. That's why it's such a moving target. For instance, if we had this conversation in 2001, and you asked us what our unfunded liability was, it would be, we would say we didn't have one, we actually have surplus. We have more money in the PERS trust fund than we have promises made. But because of the investment downturns that occurred following September 11th and then the stock market crash in '08, '07, '08, '09, the PERS portfolio has shrunk, and that has created an unfunded liability. So what the actuaries try to do is look at it like a mortgage, saying, listen, you've got a $41.2 million problem. Over the next 25 years, we're going to help you solve it. We're going to help you get to the point where you're zero again. That's the goal. It is a moving target. As if the investments go up and we do better than we planned, that target's going to go down and the rate's going to come down. If the investments do terrible, the rates will have to come up, but it's always a moving target. So you're right, and in some ways, that unfunded liability may never disappear entirely, or it may disappear. It depends on what the future brings. If, have I answered that? Hopefully.
You get one more follow-up and then go on some more.
I promise this will be the last one. So when you say 41 million as it currently stands, ideally we're at 72.2%. Should that be, you know, in a perfect world, 100%?
Yes.
Okay, so we're about 27%?
Underfunded.
Underfunded. Does that mean that the total is 164? We're at like three-quarters, the total amount of pension money?
Ah, in terms of, in terms of what we should have...
Like if you take the 41 million, is it like four times as much?
I will, we will get back to you because I would have to do a mathematical calculation of what the PERS... of what the PERS, the market value of the assets is and then that would be a divide by .72 to get to the total that was required. So I would, I just don't have it at the top of my head or it's not in my materials right now.
I'm guessing it's somewhere around 170 million or something.
I don't want to guess at this point.
But I won't guess.
But we can, we can get back to council before the next two weeks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Rennie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll sort of follow on with that. So what does the vector look like on this? What has the percent unfunded been over the past couple of years? Are we getting worse or better?
I would say because it, what really has been determining our fate in this particular category has been the investment portfolio. That's really where we make, gain ground or lose ground. And the past couple of years, PERS has done very well. They have had 14-plus percent returns, but in 2008, '09, they had a 24% total decline in their total portfolio. So we've been playing catch-up. So I think what drives that funded ratio more than our contributions is how well the investment portfolio with PERS is doing. And so I do know the past couple of years, the portfolio has turned around because the market has been very strong. So we would expect our rates actually to be positively impacted and our ratio likely will increase because we've gained more assets in our, we've made good contributions plus our, the money that we had that was invested has grown.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Zek.
So for the cities that are doing better than us, Morgan Hill, Campbell, Los Altos, do they just happen to invest more in that portfolio and so that's why they have more in there?
I asked the same question to our PERS actuary. Thank you, Mariko. Actually, what drives our funded ratio in terms of our comparison cities is the age of, the composition of our retiree and our workforce. Los Gatos, in this, because we went through this list with our PERS actuary in Sacramento, and he works these, he does calculations for these other neighboring cities. And he said, he looked at our population, our employee workforce presently onboard with us right now is on average older than our comparison cities and our retirees are, we have more retirees and they are older. So the two, those two factors, if you have younger employees, it's longer, it's longer till they retire. So the liability promise that you've made is out and it's a net present value calculation. So that net present value dollar comes down. But if you have older employees who are closer to retirement, they're, they're, they may be retiring in the next couple of years. So the actuaries have to figure that, oh, soon they'll be on the pension roll and they will be a liability that the town has to take care of. So it's more a matter of our age composition than anything else.
And with the, with the other slide programs that you did, you had your recommended areas.
Yes.
For this, I know that the national average is 72%. Professionally, are you comfortable with where we're at or would you prefer to see those numbers change?
Well, if, if you're asking me for my professional opinion, since I know that we're at the national average, I have always prided Los Gatos that we beat the national average. So I'm hoping that we will improve over time and that we will tend to be a leader in this area. And so I think a goal that we would have is that we would improve our funded ratio. And we'll talk about that because we may have opportunities with dollars. We can pay down some of this debt and we've done that with our side fund payoff and that sort of thing and our neighbor Saratoga did that. And that is something that we may be coming forward when we look at some of those excess balances I talked about. We may recommend to council that we look at possibly doing that. And that would be, I think, a good goal for the town.
Before I call on the Vice Mayor, I'm going to call on myself. In conversations with officials from different cities in the West Valleys, some take the view that they should not be paying anything to CalPERS because they can depend on CalPERS to manage their money poorly and that CalPERS will just come back and ask for more. So do you think that's a sound position? I mean, should the town put more money into that or not?
Once again, my professional opinion on that is that there is a danger in paying what you think, a council member, Leonidas, mentioned this, will that, will that unfunded liability go away? We know of cities that have said, "We'd like to pay our entire unfunded liability off" and they've wrote a check to CalPERS. Let's say they had an unfunded liability of $8 million. Two years later, there's a new report that comes out and from CalPERS that says, "Oh, by the way, you have a new unfunded liability. We didn't do as well on our investments as we planned and you now have a $2 million liability." This has happened and the finance directors are people I know that have, so we're cautious about that. One of the good things about the side fund payoff is we were promised that when we paid the side fund off, it was gone. It was done. Paying off the unfunded liability, that $41.2 million is riskier. So we would have to, if we made that decision as an organization, we'd have to go in with our eyes wide open that it isn't necessarily guaranteed because it's still subject to how well that portfolio performs.
And a follow-up before I call on the Vice Mayor. You were comparing the unfunded liability to a mortgage, home mortgage, and we all know that you can refinance a home mortgage. Can you refinance your unfunded liability? How, when, no, yes?
Yes. Typical mechanism for that is a pension obligation bond. That could be done. We could go out into the market and pay off unfunded liability with a pension obligation bond, but the danger of that, once again, is you think you've paid off the unfunded liability and it rears its ugly head again and now you have, you're beholden to a bondholder to make fixed payments over time and you've committed yourself and that is even, in my opinion, a riskier move and, but, and I don't really recommend that, but we could look at that.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Spector.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And actually, these questions segue very appropriately, I think, with my question. I had heard or seem to remember that there was a, an assumption on the state level with regard to PERS of a 7% ROI. I don't know, and that there have been times when that was so totally unrealistic that has caused towns like Los Gatos to have problems. Is that 7% still a state PERS assumption? Has that changed? Can you fill us in on that?
The discount rate has changed. It has been reduced, I believe, by a half a percent, 50 basis points. This, PERS became aware that they couldn't, couldn't, PERS, actually, if you ask PERS staff, they, over the life, since 1932 when CalPERS was formed, they have averaged historically a 7% return. If you looked at their total investment history and the life of the organization. But recent years where the market has been fairly stagnant, they recognized that that was unrealistic. So every year, they, as part of their agenda, they review their discount rate, the 7% rate that you're talking about. That's the assumed return they're going to get on the portfolio and they have been reducing it 25 basis points a year. I think the past two years they've done that. So the rate, when you lower the discount rate, the employer rates that we pay the actuary that, when I talk about the amortization of the unfunded liability, if CalPERS assumes that they're earning less in their money, they have to charge employers more to cover the difference because, and so our rates go up. But that actually is a healthy thing because if we've been underpaying, we would continue to see our unfunded liability grow and we'd be going in the wrong direction.
Vice Mayor, go ahead and follow-up.
Yeah, just one more. You said that the state 7% was actually accurate over some long period of time.
Yes.
What was the, the beginning and end year approximately of that 7%?
I believe CalPERS uses 1932 to the present day.
I sort of thought that. Thank you.
Councilman Rennie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You may have said this, but the $14 million police budget, does that include this payment towards the pension?
Yes, it does.
And how much is that payment?
That would be, we may have that and if I don't, I'll let, maybe Jen can find that. I don't have it right off, off the top of my head, but within that $14 million budget for public safety is a significant pension expense that we pay.
Is it like 1 million, 2 million?
It's somewhere in that neighborhood. It would be, it's approximately 32% of the payroll, for police payroll.
Okay, so that, follow-on if I might. So then if we, put my hand on the third rail here, decided to outsource to the sheriff's department, would they take that pension liability from us or would we have to continue paying 2 to 3 million on top of what we pay the sheriff's department?
My guess is that they would not assume that liability without some remuneration because that's a liability they would be taking on for our past, our past officer, you know, our public safety. I would think that there would have to be a consideration of that.
But that payment would go down over time because we wouldn't be accumulating anymore.
There would be no new, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions before I move on? I'm not going to let you move on because I forgot to ask you a question on the last section, so I apologize.
Okay, that's fine.
You indicated that our revenues were actually changing to be more dependent on property tax and sales tax and I just wanted to ask you if that was something that we should be concerned about because with Proposition 13, we, property tax could remain stagnant, et cetera, so.
I think the good news about that story is that property tax is very stable. In the years I've been Director of Finance here, we've never had a year where property tax actually decreased. It's always at least maintained the level of the year before so we can rely on it. It's a more steady revenue. It's very reliable revenue and we can plan on it. The downside to property taxes, it doesn't have huge increases like sales tax may happen. You have a new company come into town and they do booming business. We had, when I first started in 2001, a company named Cat Technology had sales office based here in Los Gatos. We were receiving 4 million a year from their sales alone. It was a statewide sales office as an example. You would have to do a lot of residential and commercial property development to achieve a general fund revenue of $4 million. So the sales tax, plus and minus of sales taxes, it's a wonderful revenue, but it's extremely variable based on the economy. Property tax is very steady and so it is a stronger revenue that we can rely on. It just doesn't grow like that.
Okay, thank you. I guess we can move on to your next section.
Okay, and now I would like to introduce Jennifer Callaway, our Budget and Finance Manager, who will now take you into the next section. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm just going to fast-forward here quickly to the next section. While I'm doing that, when we were tasked with doing this presentation for you, I was given the workload analysis and cost-saving strategy section and dare I say, I thought that would be a fun challenge in that I've been with the town for two and a half years. So a lot of this was an educational experience for me, too, in going over our historical trends and what we've done. So we attend many annual conferences, seminars, and there's a common theme that's always mentioned. Every municipality essentially is complaining about doing more with less. So we kind of took this as an opportunity to say, "Is that really true? Is that true for the Los Gatos? So let's kind of walk through that and see if that is true." The first thing that we did was decided we needed to look at our staffing trends over 10 years. We used 10 years as a reasonable basis going back in that it covered the recession period and the recovering economy now. So if we look at this, we have permanent FTEs. When I say FTEs, I mean full-time equivalents. I work 40 hours a week, that's 2,080 hours a year. We have some employees that work less than that, maybe 20 hours a week, that's 1,040 hours a year. So that's a .5 FTE. So all of our temporary hours and all of our staffing positions, we equate to that full-time equivalent, just to get a good idea and a fair comparison basis. So you'll see, over the 10-year period, we went from 160 full-time permanent FTEs to 149. We lost about 11 positions, full-time permanent positions during that period. You can see pretty clearly when the recession came, we slowly started to lose, lose those positions. And of course, we would try to offset that with some temporary positions because temporary positions are considered non-obligatory positions. You don't expect necessarily that they would be budgeted in the next fiscal year. So you can see where temp positions really did increase over the period. So net, we lost about nine positions over the 10-year period that we looked at. So then we thought it would be, since we had done the analysis on staffing, we thought it was really important to try to get some workload measures and focus on our four key service departments, library, PPW, CDD, and police, and look and see what specifically they have done in the last 10, 10 years or so compared to their staffing levels. So the first one we want to look at is library. The library is a really interesting story. You can see their staffing pretty much remained stagnant. There were some dips when the recession hit. We're back up to about the same level in terms of FTEs. The interesting part here is that we all know in February of 2012, we opened the new library facility. So the old library facility was a 14,000-square-foot building. The new facility that we have now is about 30,000 square feet. So we added, it's more than double the size of square footage and we've asked the same staffing level to maintain that increased footage. Of course, that doesn't mean that the services we provided were more, so we thought, how could we measure that? And we thought patronage, the number of customers through our door would be at least somewhat of a good indicator of what level of service the library has increased or remained the same, same over the course of the 10-year period. When we bring in the green line, that is our door count, that's our patronage, the number of customers through the door. And you can see it's about doubled over the 10-year period. It spiked when the library opened and it's leveling out now at about 370,000 customers through our door. Then we thought, well, not every customer through the door needs service. Some people can come in and ourselves, help themselves and get their own, their own materials. So maybe we need to come up with another measure and see if it's same reflection. So we used reference materials or our annual circulation counts. That's just the number of reference materials circulated through our library. And there's a very similar trend, about 385,000 pieces of material up to 631,000 over the 10-year period. And see, in the library, it's been a pretty significant increase in, in work compared to staffing trends. Next, we looked at police. With our police department, we think it's really important to distinguish between our sworn and our non-sworn staff. So the first charts that we're going to bring up are the blue charts. Those are our sworn staff. You'll see we've gone from 42 sworn positions in '05, '06 to 40 in 2014, '15. I want to point out in 2014, '15, our current year, that includes one provisional, one-time-funded higher head position is what we called it, an over-strength position. That has not been, is not being proposed to be funded in 15, '16. So that count will actually go down. It'll be 39 for a total loss of sworn positions of about three. Then we add in our permanent non-sworn staffing and our FTEs and that's a similar story in that we've lost about three FTEs during the 10-year period. So we had to come up with what would be a good measure for police, what's a good workload measure for police. So we used calls for service. And you can see when you chart that in there, goes from about 24,000 calls per service to 36,000 in 14, '15. So again, a pretty significant increase over the 10-year period. CDD is our next comparison. CDD is interesting and as Steve was talking about earlier, is kind of our most economically sensitive department. We have large-scale projects that go on and we have smaller home remodels or smaller-scale projects that go on. And a plan check or a building permit counts as one regardless of the size. So we don't want to just look at number of permits processed. A better, a better model would be the dollar value because that's associated with the size or the square footage of the project. So we have building and planning permit revenues. When we look at the staffing, we have a trend of an increase over the years. We go 18.6 FTEs to 20.52. Again, in 14, '15, this is a similar story as with PD. There's a one-time provisional planning tech position that was funded in 14, '15, this current year. We're not proposing to fund that in 15, '16. So that'll go down to be an increase of about one, one FTE. When we pull in the building permit model, this really tells the story of how economically sensitive this department is. We go from 1.4 million generated in '05, '06. When the recession hits, we plummet down to 750,000 and as the economy is recovering, we climb back up and we're about 1.6, six-ish estimated for this year. If we do planning permits, it's kind of a similar story, a little less volatile, but along the same lines. And Councilman Moretti, you were asking about how do we maintain staffing given how volatile that is? So there's certain level of work that's always going to exist in CDD. Even when the economy is bad, people are still doing some renovations, we still have workload level. So we wouldn't necessarily want to decrease our staffing significantly because we've invested a lot in our staff and getting institutional knowledge, they're trained, and when the economy comes back, they're ready to go and they're ready to start doing the permits, review the building checks. So we need to maintain that certain level of staffing. How we offset that is we do hire, we have some contractual people on staff that can do some of our plan check reviews. So we utilize those during the peak periods of time. The last department we want to look at is our PPW department. That consists of facilities. So that's the staff that is responsible for maintaining all of these town-owned facilities that we have. So when we look at the staff, it goes from about two employees to 2.8 employees from '08, '09 to 14, '15. And then we'll pull in our square footage. So we started at 83,000 square feet in '08, '09. We added the police ops building, about 15,000 square feet, or 12,000 square feet, I'm sorry, up on the boulevard in 2009, '10. And then in 11, '12... And then, in '11-'12, the library came on board, another 30,000 square feet addition, and another 30,000 square feet in '12-13 for the sports park. So, the, an increase in staffing of about one FTE had to cover an increase of about 72,000 square feet. If you equate that in terms of their budget, that goes from $16.50 per square foot to $10.50 per square foot. So, we've maintained substantially more square footage at less cost to the town. So, after looking at those four key areas, we decided to look at some of our cost-saving strategies. We need to be cognizant going forward of what we can continue to do to control our costs, but we also should keep in mind of what we've already done, because we have already done quite a bit to help reduce costs to the town. Probably the most memorable for everybody here on the council is the side fund payoff that was authorized in June of 2014. As Steve mentioned, that's estimated to save us $700,000 to $900,000 annually over the next five years. We've also had furloughs. We've had furloughs '09-'10 through budgeted furloughs in 13-14. When we did our mid-year adjustments, a mid-year review in 2013-14, we saw that our revenues were coming in ahead of what we predicted. So, we were actually able to rescind furloughs during that fiscal year and pay back the employees. But from '09-10 to '12-13, we had anywhere from 24 to 40 hours of furlough savings. All the departments contributed in, in some way, whether it be salaries in lieu or deferred, deferred raises, giving up other time, or actually having furlough time reductions. And then, we have projected that that saved $300,000 to $170,000, depending on the year that they were implemented. In addition to furloughs, we've had freezes. Our, our employees have, sorry, that's the next one. Our employees had not had salary increases until this fiscal year. 14-15 is the first fiscal year for salary increases for the management employees and the, and the non-sworn employees as well. Our vacancies through attrition, I think it's a fair statement to say that Los Gatos was one of the only communities that didn't have to lay people off during the recession. Instead, as there were separations and retirements, we used those positions, froze those to positions, and then were pretty creative in redeploying management-level positions to frontline service delivery positions, so we didn't have to impact our service delivery. And that's what the next bullet point speaks to, is our organizational restructures. Few more things that we did is, we did recently renegotiate with our labor unions to control health cost containment. That saved us about $300,000 annually, and we have implemented a three-tier, non-sworn retirement system and a two-tier sworn retirement system. Those are gonna be savings that we'll see in the future as our, as our force starts to retire out. And then, all of the departments have been asked to extend equipment life. So, we've not replaced laptops, we've kept older versions that are still functioning, tasers, our mobile in-car video cameras. Pretty much every piece of equipment has been extended beyond what we typically would have done in order to defer the cost of replacement. So, in addition to these cost-saving strategies, we've had to rely on technology that kinda helps to offset some of the reductions in staffing and just people hours available to do services. So, this is a pretty extensive list of some of our technology enhancements. Our parks reservations are available online 24/7. That's a help for the staff and also convenience for our, for our residents, that they can go online and make their park reservations whenever they like. We're piloting a new program with our building inspectors. They have laptops out in the field. They're able to access our systems remotely, write their notes, get information that they need, instead of having to come back to town and then go back to the residence address or the client's address that they're at. So, it's better customer service and more effective and efficient for us as well. We've issued electronic pay stubs rather than the paper pay stubs. A couple of years ago, we were still generating 160-ish pay stubs every two weeks, and somebody had to stuff them in envelopes and get them distributed. Now, we do them electronically. So, all, most of our employees have direct deposit. We're able to send those via email, and we only have to do about 10 each pay period right now. And of course, our website redesign, our website's been completely rehauled, much more user-friendly, and a lot more information available online, including our town code, which is more accessible and easily searchable online. And then, we are currently in the process of getting a high fiber optic upgrade in our library. We're gonna have 20 times faster internet connection, which will be a great service for the customers. So, having looked back, now we wanna keep in mind what we can do going forward. We're going to be facing increasingly, increasing challenges with limited resources. We have costs that are just out of our control in terms of what our PRS rates are, what our health rates are. So, we, we need to be cognizant of our future and how we can continue to maintain those costs. We could always consider negotiating more benefit cost containment, maybe some cost savings or cost-sharing strategies with the employees in our unions. Also, there's increasing evidence that enhanced wellness and health programs really reduce health costs for agencies. So, we could explore, explore more options there. Also, we need to consider some new revenue opportunities. There's revenue measures, maybe we can consider business license amnesty tax programs, business license audits. And we need to really strongly promote our local mortar and brick shopping rather than online shopping. There's an increasing trend towards online retail, and we get less of a percentage of the sales tax for that. In some instances, it may be appropriate to consider our public-private collaborations. We need to maximize our use of grant funding when that's available and appropriate. And then, some strategic outsourcing and insourcing. And what we mean by that is, we need to be creative and think of if there's some, some of our neighbors have dedicated parcel taxes, maybe we wanna see if they would wanna dedicate them to us rather than the county for services that we provide. And our strategic outsourcing, a good example would be our plan check reviews that we just talked about with CDD. When the economy's doing great, we're able to outsource those out instead of maintaining the staffing in-house for that. So, at this point, if there's any questions on any of this, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Vice Mayor Spector.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two questions. First of all, with regard to the slide on the police department, you said that there was a significant increase in the calls for service. And so, the question is, why would there have been such an increase? Is it because there are more calls for service, or is it because there is a different and better tracking mechanism? Or some other reason?
I think we'll let the chief answer that.
There are a lot of different theories as to why we've had the increase from changes in the state legislature and POP 47, AB 109, complexity in crime, increase in internet crimes. We haven't drilled down to that level. I know that we did look at our comparison cities, and I don't know if it made it into this slide, is that the increase in calls for service is consistent with comparable agencies. So, Campbell, Morgan Hill, Los Altos, and other agencies are seeing the same increases. We haven't completely drilled down on specifically why that's occurred. There are theories. We can look at historically and go back and say, how many burglaries occurred in 2010 as opposed to current time, and, and show those differences. But to drill down and, and tell you exactly why it is, we, we haven't done that research.
Thank you. And the second question has to do with the economic vitality slide that you had on my page. It's page 28. I don't know about you. And the question there is, one of the things you mentioned is promote local brick and mortar shopping. And, you know, we are the council, and you are the finance department. What, what do you envision with regard to that objective within this context?
I think that would be a town-wide. We have an economic vitality coordinator that we could work with. For us in the finance world, it's really, we look at the sales tax revenue generated. So, when we see, we just got an update recently, and you'll see in the proposed budget coming forward, that our sales tax projections are actually slowing down much, at a significantly greater rate than we had previously thought. So, our, our December results were not as positive as we had hoped for and had projected. So, that just has it on our radar, something that we need to be cautious of, that Netflix, we're still experiencing a decline from Netflix. There's still more and more customers transitioning to that streaming model, which we don't get the revenue from for that. So, that's still an impact. And then, when there's an increasing trend to shop online, we do get a percentage of the pool. It's just not as substantial as if they shop here in town and we get it from them.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. If I may add, that if this is a topic of interest for the council in terms of how we can address sales tax and what we might wanna look at in terms of economic vitality, when you consider your strategic goals, that could be one of the actions that we could take. We could look at a portfolio or a strategic plan of some ideas that would help support our local businesses. Thank you.
So, Ms. Pravetti, thank you. I'm just gonna ask that we do get that information? I think they'd be interested in that. And as part of that, could we get the information of, Ms. Callaway is saying we get a percentage of the internet tax? I don't know what that is, versus, I'm assuming, 100% of the tax from brick and mortar sales? Is that right?
Right, that's right. So, it's based on the pool, that it goes into a county pool, and we get a percentage of that, but we can get you the allocations.
Okay. Other questions? Councilwoman Seok.
And actually, Ms. Pravetti, if you're compiling a list, I've seen lots of these hybrids now where you can buy online but pick it up at your local store. Does that somehow change the revenue we would receive, or is it still part of that percentage?
It's my understanding, when we met, when we met with our sales tax consultant, we were trying to dig down to that. If it's picked up in our shop here in Los Gatos, like Williams Sonoma, for example, we get the sales tax revenue from that.
And I've had several people ask me that, so that would be a good answer to share. Is there a difference between sales tax from retail versus dining?
Yes. Well, when we get our, our breakdown, we, it's broken down into segments. It's the same percentage, but we can tell if our, our dining is actually, our restaurants do very well.
Okay.
It tends to be our retail.
Okay. And if I may, just one more. With the library, with the increased circulation, I under, I know that we don't pay for library cards. Is that a benefit for all residents, or is that for everyone that, that uses our library?
It's all residents, I believe. Everybody is free.
Oh, in the state? Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Leonards.
Couple of questions. Revenue sources. We get something called franchise fees from PG&E, cable companies, water companies, trash companies. Are there any ways to increase franchise fees for, say, a cellphone or something that can bring a new revenue source to Los Gatos?
Our utility users' tax, we could, we could look, and that would be a revenue measure that we might wanna consider.
So?
Yes.
Can we request of staff that that be looked at as well, as a future revenue opportunity?
We could incorporate that in the strategic goals discussion as well, and then we'll bring back more information for you.
I'm, I'm looking at Mr. Schultz, and I'm assuming that any utility tax would have to go on a ballot and be passed by two-thirds major, correct?
Yes.
Two-thirds or majority, depending on the sales tax and whether it was a special tax or a general tax. And, and so, that means what it would be used for. We can bring that back, and, and there's a myriad of different 911 user tax fees or other that are being bannered around, so we can bring that back of all the different ideas and see if there's any council majority that wants to pursue them.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Councilwoman Moreni.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two questions, one about police department, and then one back on the development department. Let me start with Chief Frisbee. I'm assuming a lot and guessing a lot, so maybe you could comment on my assumptions and guesses, to see if I understand. So, I'm assuming that non-sworn employees are less expensive because they're probably not as skilled, not as much training, and that you would then want to move more work towards non-sworn employees and have less sworn employees to save money, for example. But you, at your 40, or next year, you're gonna be 39 sworn employees, you, you really can't go below that number and have effective patrol regiments and so forth. So, you see where I'm going? Is there any way to move more to less expensive employees? The answer's probably no, but I was hoping you could comment on that.
Well, one of the things that Jennifer did talk about is, as we have been hiring, we've been hiring tier-two folks. So, there's a two-tiered retirement system. And so, I think the last, three of the last four that we have hired are in that last group are tier-two folks. So, they come in at a lesser cost. A tier-two person, about $164,000, and a top-tier, you know, much more, $264,000. So, we can adjust savings there. We can always look at staffing levels on the shifts. So, currently, we're at three. We have three-beach structure in town, and so, we've got three folks and a sergeant. We have and do have CSOs that handle lower-level crimes that work on what we call cold calls. And so, you could implement more of those folks potentially to work on priority-two and priority-three calls. But you are correct that, depending on the needs of the community and the direction from council and priority levels, you need a certain amount of folks to respond to your priority-one or priority-two type calls. But again, it's, it's based upon resource level.
And you had one other question?
Yeah. So, you partially answered my question about the community development department. Could you go back to the slide that, that shows the building permits and so forth? And make, yeah, there you go. So, the, the purple line didn't change very much. The greenish line changes a lot, but you notice the point when the permits were the lowest isn't when the staffing is the lowest. I think missing from the total budget here, though, is, is probably contract money. So, what I really was interested in is, how close do we get to this break-even of, you know, not having to pull out of general fund to fund this department, basically? And this, this, I don't think gives the full picture on that.
I think our Assistant Town Manager, it's probably best to answer that.
Thank you. A couple of points. First of all, you can see that even during the downturn, we were still issuing permits. We still had people who wanted to invest in their property, and that would require plan-checking, cost-recovery activities such as inspection, et cetera. Typically, there is a lag. Usually, the permit activity drops off first, and then usually, it takes a town or a city a year or so before they're able to make the budget adjustments and reduce their staffing levels, either through addition, attrition, or other measures. But typically, all of this business is cost-recovery. So, as things slow down, we aren't doing as much pass-through work, we're not hiring the contractors, the consultants who assist us with plan check. We're really keeping all the work in-house with that minimum, that core minimum-trained staff. But when we start seeing those peaks as we did the last couple of years, that's when we need outside plan checkers to supplement the work of our own staff.
So, I can assume then, over most of this time, we stayed pretty close to the break-even?
And, and really, we have to, because we're not a profit center, we're just cost-recovery.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Leonards.
Thank you, Mayor Jensen. We talked about the CalPERS situation. Is there any other options? Is there a way to opt out of CalPERS moving forward? Can we establish our own 401K program? Or is that too radical an idea?
There are, San Jose, for instance, is not a member of CalPERS, that you can have your own independent retirement system.
So, is that a potential to save money or not be, be beholden to the, the delicacies of the CalPERS system moving forward? Or is that something that would be more of a disaster? Or do we not know?
Yeah, you're definitely not beholden to their investments. You can make your own investment choices.
Having, having been in two private retirement systems, I could tell you that it's closer to being a disaster probably than PERS. They have not functioned any more effectively at times, because they do some of the same things that you were concerned about, which is, they sometimes overestimate their return, and they get very generous sometimes with benefits, and they get, and they're locally controlled, which is good if, if you're careful about how you construct the retirement boards, but I've seen that be a problem as well. So, in that sense, if you're looking for parallel retirement systems that are comparable to PERS, they aren't very effective. But if you're looking at something altogether different, that, that's a different ballgame and, and then one that you'd have to negotiate and look at way out front with new employees, and it would probably be a difficult negotiation. I don't think many towns or cities have been able to do that at this point.
So, in other words, 401K or something, say, from this point forward, we, we had a 401K program or something that they could sign up for, and they weren't going to be on a pension program anymore?
You can have that, and usually, it's treated as a supplemental program, and it isn't the core retirement program item. Steve may know of some places that have done that only, but I- Steve may know of some places that have done that only, but I haven't, I haven't heard of them.
I'm not aware of any city that has left PERS in the state personally. My, my, my comment would be that as the council's probably aware, the new PEPRA law that went into place in 2013 substantially, we will see reduced costs in the future because the new hires that the town will make of the younger generation, that they will, that sustainability, I think, has been addressed by legislature, probably not to the level that, that would be desirable. But I think there'll be future legislative actions that may even address this. But then now, the new retirement plan, the new PEPRA plan for new employees that come onboard the town in general is a, is a, is a plan. I believe that the retirement age is 60 and the benefit is a 2% per year of service, which is a more sustainable. If you talk to most financial experts, they'll say that is actually a fairly sustainable retirement plan. I think that was the one that the voters put into place. There'll probably be movement to even make, to make some adjustments over time. I think one of the problems when you try to just leave PERS is you would still have a lot of, the unfunded liability for all the past pension people, all the folks onboard, that would not go away. So you would be establishing a new plan and then you would still have the remaining liabilities. And I think the fact that we have new PEPRA, a new PEPRA plan for our new hires, that actually is a much more sustainable plan. So I don't think we'd have to do anything as drastic as that because the new people coming onboard are in a much more sustainable plan.
And when you look at the systems that have failed, like in Stockton or Vallejo or in Detroit, there was something bizarre happening to them. You know, they either got out of control on benefits or they had an economy that tanked for a lot of reasons that yours hasn't and won't. So I think there's factors like that that have to be considered. And there's only been a very few jurisdictions that have had serious problems. Most of them have gotten a handle on coming up with two-tiered retirement systems and putting in controls on health benefit costs.
Okay. So what I'd like to do is, we have another section, I realize, Mr. Conway and Ms. Callaway. Mr. White suggests that it could be incorporated into our May 19 presentation because it's now 6:35 and we have one person that wants to talk. And what I'm going to suggest to council people is that we do take the benchmarking at our May 19 meeting, that we allow Ms. Dorner to address us and that then we come back and I'll just go down the podium and for anything that you want to be brought back as a more detailed answer to any of your questions, if we could just, we'll give that to staff and then we'll try to end, to give us time to read our desk items and get ready for the meeting at 7:00. So I'm going to call it Ms. Dorner, but I'm going to thank, before we get to the end, Mr. Conway, Mr. Ms. Callaway, thank you so much. That was very inform, whoa, very informative, really helpful. So thank you. And Ms. Dorner, you have three minutes.
I hope I'm not disappointing anybody, but my sombrero had no lavender in it. Happy Cinco de Mayo. I just wanted to take a few moments. When I think of budgets as a resident, I look at our, the way that our town is supposed to function and our governance process. Residents are the people who look for people like you, people we have elected, who we believe share the core values and character that we're looking for, who have respect for our lifestyle and for our town and who understands the wants and needs of the community as a whole as well as individuals. We hire you essentially as our parents, okay? Wouldn't it be nice if you could pick your parents and know how you were going to grow up over time? I just wanted to thank you for taking that job on. In addition, you have an unbelievable number of people on boards and commissions who volunteer. And I've changed, I've taken liberty to your, to your official organization chart and I have put dotted lines to the boards and commissions for the attorney and manager. Not only do they directly report to you, but they provide a significant amount of support to all the people who support you as well. I just wanted to say that at one point, once you get hired as our parents, then we turn into kids. And all you hear is me, 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 and I want, I want, I need, I need. And that's what budgets are all about. And so I do appreciate the process that you go through, through this budget process, not just as what it takes to support our town, but for building towards the future. And the one thing that I'd like to understand further as we go into this next year is how you might share more information with the residents about what happens to particular budgets, big budgets, as things progress. I really, really loved that January 13 budget meeting that you had when you took all of the capital improvement projects and went through them one by one so that everybody was on a common page as to what it was, what was going to be entailed. On January 13th, Mr. Capurso and Mr. Larson both said they were extremely confident with that $550,000, which was to address the HVAC, address the new ADA in the bathroom and to address the, there was one other thing they were going to do, which we all really needed to make it usable. Over time, oh my God, the only other thing that came up was new meeting rooms for the staff. So I'm not sure what all went into the increase of scope here, but it was crazy. And during that process, I didn't really see anything to come back to let us, the residents, know what happened during that process. I know my time is running out, but I think there could be some kind of a mid-year review on the bigger projects and projects that are over a million, maybe have a board or a commission or somebody who takes responsibility for following those through to completion, like our friends for the library with the library or people on the parks commission who did the sports park. Just, you know, things that are, have a big dollar amount really need to have an ongoing review.
Thank you. Let me go start with Councilwoman Rennie and see, aside from those things that we've already mentioned that we want staff to come back to us on, is there any other item that you want specific information returned to you on?
My guess is I'm going to get it anyway. There was a couple mentions of staffing levels increased this year that they were planning to not have next year. I assume they're going to bring that back as, as part of the budget. One of the questions I had been thinking of asking was, you know, if you read the, this year's budget, it talks about adding different FTEs for different things. And I wanted to know how those went and whether it was effective or not. And I heard two places where they are kind of taking them back off, so maybe they weren't effective.
Okay. Vice Mayor Specter, anything?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, the presentation was fantastic. Not only the, the way the two individuals presented it, but the substantive content. So thank you on that. For our next budget meeting, you have benchmarking coming up, as the mayor pointed out. And I had two questions on that. On the average expenditures, you compared Los Gatos to 31 California cities. And my question was going to be, how were those cities selected? Because for me, it, it impacts the credibility of the comparison. And then there was also a slide on general fund budget allocations by department. And my question there was what, what was the objective of this information? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Leonards.
Thank you, Mayor Jensen. Again, the utilities commission, whether they're taxes that need two-thirds majorities or whatever, whether they're 911 surcharges or something, that, those types of things as sources of revenue. Business license SCUFLaws, I know in the past, we've talked about going in, trying to find out who really has a license and who is not or who may be under-licensed. So perhaps pursuing that more thoroughly and doing an analysis, a cost-benefit analysis, it'll cost us as much to find out if we can collect this much type of thing. Maybe it's worth it, maybe it isn't. I would like to get some more information on our potential population coming in the North Forty, if we're going to have 1,500 more people living there someday. This is maybe a big, a longer-term picture, but how much is that going to cost the town in services for library, PPW, parks, or community development and police? And last but not least, I kind of like Ms. Dorner's idea of maybe a spending oversight commission for big projects. I don't know if we would appoint five or seven citizens to a committee like that to look at things like the almond grove streets or the library renovation or those types of projects going forward. But I know the school district has those oversight committees every time they pass a bond measure. And I think it gives the public transparency and confidence when they vote those in, so tall order.
Councilwoman Seok.
Okay, thank you. With regard to the general fund expenditures by department for 31 California cities, I had the same question. If you could just do a side note of what, what those 31 cities are for our own reference. I've been hearing a lot about unfunded traffic needs of 40 million. I want to know, is that a valid number? And how does one, how does someone come up with that number? Is that in a document somewhere? And then we've talked about economic vitality. I definitely want that to come back. A specific question I've gotten several times about the library is who, who pays library cards? My understanding now is no one. But then the question that's often brought to me is several people can go to the Saratoga Library or other county libraries for free, yet other people have to pay a charge. And if someone could just clarify who gets charged when which library's visited, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, mine are all covered. I just want to thank you again, Mr. Conway, Ms. Callaway, and all the members of the staff who I know contributed to this project. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here to answer our questions. Mr. White, I think this was your idea. You could say no if it wasn't, but I think it was. It's been really helpful, very valuable, and I think that we all appreciate it. So thank you very much for bringing that forward. So we're going to close the study session, take a break till 7:00.